All right, ladies and gentlemen, let's have your attention now for round two. Planning Commission is now back in session. We now move to the quasi-judicial item. This is item PC 16-14. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 29 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations by amending the City of North Miami official zoning map referenced in Article 1, Section 1-106 to reflect the rezoning of four lots generally located at the southeast corner of the intersection of Northeast 135th Street and Memorial Highway with Miami-Dade County Folio numbers 06-2230, 0000290, Folio 06-2230, 00120, Folio 06-2230-0000121, and Folio 06-2230-00000122 from the current R4 residential zoning to C1 commercial zoning to allow a proposed commercial development consistent with the intent of the City of North Miami Comprehensive Plan providing for conflict severability and an effective date. Now, we've read this into the record, but since the amendment to the Land Development Regulations was denied-
The comprehensive plan is point of order.
Comprehensive plan, okay. The rezoning becomes moot because in order to deal with the zoning, we would have had to have first amended the comprehensive plan. Since we did not do that, the developer now has the opportunity to withdraw this item. Does the developer choose to do that, Mr. Wallen?
No, thank you.
You want this hearing to go forward?
Yes, but in the interest-
Yes, Mr. Chairman Frank Wallen, but in the interest of saving time, we will not repeat any of our remarks, and we trust that those present will not repeat their remarks and we'll have a very, very brief hearing.
So then you reserve the right only to rebut at the end?
And I won't take that opportunity either.
You're waiving that as well, all right?
If it goes that way.
If it goes that way, yes. Well, I'd rather think it has to.
That's fine.
Mr. Galdos, your opinion, please.
Well, my opinion is that this item required the approval of the first item. And because the first item was not approved, you cannot now even conflict with your disapproval of the first item. So your vote necessarily, this issue to me, it's moot. And if you would like to entertain it, you may, but you will have to reflect a vote, which is very similar to the one you had earlier because you cannot now conflict with the comprehensive plan. In other words, the comprehensive plan required an amendment, your approval, before we could even consider this item. I would say-
I think we understand that, certainly.
I guess the question then is the correct procedure? And either do we have to present a withdrawal since it is moot, or do we pass on the item?
Well, you can agree with me that this item is moot. Or if you like, you could take another vote, but again, you cannot conflict with your first vote, but it's moot.
We understand.
But what happens if we all determine, of course, it is moot?
Then the hearing doesn't go forward?
Well, exactly. And I will not present, I will not administer the oath, but if you would like to, for the record and send it to council with your vote, then I will place folks on the record, those who desire to speak on this item, even though I feel this item is moot, will then have the opportunity to do so, and then you can run your vote.
Mr. City Attorney, the reason I believe that technically we should go forward, and I think it will be very brief, because I don't intend to say much of anything, but the reason is that in the event that the city council would disagree with the Planning Commission about the change in the comprehensive plan, then there would be a vote at the council, but there would be no recommendation of the Planning Commission. Do you understand?
You then afford an item that you've, that this Planning Commission, by virtue of not passing the first item, feels that it's moot, vote on it and send it to council that way.
I'd like to motion that we vote.
All right, the chair will entertain a motion on this item.
Yes, I'd like to take a motion that we vote on this.
All right, well, we're approved on that. Make a motion on the item.
Yes, to deny the item.
Second.
Move to denied. Second denied. All in favor?
Aye.
Denied. All right, you've got your vote.
Is it denied as moot? Pick how you want to do it.
You, how would you, again, the item, this is the technicality, you, the item required the approval of the first item. So you deny the rezoning?
Yes, we're denying the rezoning.
Okay. To correspond with your first vote on the-
We are denying the rezoning.
Yeah, you need to be consistent, period.
The issue of being moot is if you choose not to withdraw, then we vote to deny the rezoning.
Okay, that's all right.
And that's how it goes to council.
No, that's it.
I think it's been clarified.
All right, now, the zoning on that has been denied. Recommended, recommendation for denial, you understand that. It now goes to the city council where you've got to go through this a second time, and I hope the council is as lenient on the three-minute speaking allowance as the Planning Commission has been.
Two minutes.
Now, there's, yeah, they usually give you only two minutes, so you need to tighten up your timelines a little bit. And now we have one last item. This has to do with the development on Northeast 6th and 135th. All right, ladies and gentlemen, PC 2-15. A resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida authorized an approval of the conditional use permit in substantially the attached form transferring 158 bonus units from the Neighborhood Redevelopment Overlay, NRO, district primary residential pool of 2,200, actually 2,191 floating residential units for a proposed development generally located on the northwest corner of the intersection of Northeast 135th Street and Northeast 6th Avenue situated within the NRO district in accordance with Article 4, Section 4-405 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations, providing for an effective date and for all of the purposes. Staff report, please.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. Good evening again. Staff request that the Planning Commission recommend approval of the proposed resolution and issuance of a conditional use permit allocating or transfer of 58 bonus units from the NRO overlay district primary residential pool of 2,200 floating residential units for the proposed development generally located on the northwest quadrant of Northeast 135th Street and Northeast 6th Avenue and forward conditional use permit to the city council for final consideration. The subject property is a vacant 1.65 acre site that is comprised of six lots and is located at the northwest intersection of Northeast 135th and Northeast 6th Ave. In 2013, the former applicant, Carful Group, was granted multiple land use approval by this commission and also the city council, which changed the land use designation of the property to high-density residential. Also, we zoned it to our 6th multifamily district and moved the NRO boundary line to include all properties within the NRO district. In addition, the property was granted a conditional use permit for the allocation of 138 additional bonus units as well as a bonus height of 35 feet from the established NRO primary pool of 2,200 floating units to build 140-foot-high, 191-unit multifamily residential development on the site. However, no permit was pulled within a year of state approval, and that conditional use permit has since been expired. So this proposal today is basically, has been scaled down, the property has since been reduced from 2.2 acres to 1.65, and then there's a new applicant, which he has, with the consent of the property owner, has filed a new application for conditional use permit. And this time, there is no request for a high bonus, but only to allocate 58 additional bonus units on the property. By right, they can build 41 units in that R6 district, given the density of 25 units per acre, or they requesting 58,000 units from the NRO bonus, NRO primary residential pool of floating units. And so, based on the analysis that we're using, the standard set forth in Article 3, Section 345 of the City Land Development Regulations, and the application is then consistent with the comprehensive land use plan in that it would promote redevelopment efforts within the NRO by allowing the transfer of units from the city designated pool of bonus units to areas such as the subject site. The application is also in compliance with the district regulation applicable to the proposed development, including the bonus provision in Section 4-405 if applicable. The proposed conditional use application is in compliance with the district, NRO district, and as such, at 1.65 acres, the proposed development qualifies for the maximum density bonus of 60 dwelling units per acre, which could yield 99 residential units on the site. The applicant is also consist, the application is also consistent with the applicable development standards in this LDR, although a precise plan was, I mean, not submitted, was not required, the applicant has, is submitting some preliminary plans, and I think the applicant today has brought in some other plans that they may submit to the Planning Commission at this time for you, the review. They proposing to build a seven-story building, which will be well within the height requirements in our 6th zoning district, that will also be, make all the setback in all other development standards applicable to that district. And as part of the conditional use approval process, there will be a DRC review. At that time, they would submit, you know, precise plans, and then we will ensure that, you know, not just, you know, that the requirement of the districts are met, but also any other applicable standard to further ensure, you know, the integrity of the surrounding, you know, neighborhoods. The site for the proposed use relates to street and highways, highways adequate in width and pavement type to carry the quantity of, and kind of traffic generated by the proposed use or adequate mitigation is provided. The subject site is located at the northeast, at the corner of Northeast 135th and Northeast 6th Ave. Both streets are classified as state-owned FDOT arterial woods. The city's transportation master plans indicate that the segment of Northeast 135th in proximity of the site is operating at a level of service F. It should be noted that policy 2A.1.1 of the city complaint requires that all woodways in the city shall operate at or above LOS standard of E. So the city, even though the city is designated as a transportation currency exemption area, so the city complaint requires that the city actively pursue multimodal strategies when encouraging or more pedestrian-oriented environment that promotes walking, bicycling, and public transit usage. Within anticipated increase in traffic generated from the site, staff believe that the proposed would cause further decline in the woodway LOS, and is therefore requiring that the applicant proposes multimodal transportation alternatives such as bicycle racks, public transportation, and car pulling to alleviate the added traffic anticipated from the site. The proposed use is compatible with the nature, condition, and development of adjacent uses, building, and structures, and will not adversely affect the adjacent uses, building, or structure. Staff also believe that the proposed development will greatly complement the surrounding neighborhood as it offers a wide range of housing choices and related amenities in the area, which is lacking in new residential facilities for low and moderate-income families, namely the elderly who often have difficulties finding quality affordable housing within the city. As additionally, per Section 445 of the LDR, the subject site is, the site is subject to certain development restrictions governing the building, scale setbacks, and parking to ensure a compatible transition between the low-density single-family neighborhood west of the subject site. The parcel proposed for development is adequate in size and shape to accommodate all development features. At 1.65 acres and lying along two major corridors, staff believe the subject parcel is suitable in size and shape to accommodate the proposed 99-unit multifamily residential development. And as far as, you know, impact on use, livability, value, and development of adjacent properties, in this development will make way for one of the first major redevelopment projects to occur on Northeast 6th Avenue corridor in many years. It is proposed, it is anticipated to greatly improve the image of the corridor, which has a large stock of many older apartment buildings. As such, efforts to improve the site anticipate to have a positive impact on neighboring properties and enhance the aesthetic of the area. The nature of the proposed development is not detrimental to the public health, safety, and general welfare of the community. As proposed, the future development will provide new multifamily unit in a mix of community facilities that will provide onsite amenities for future residents. Staff believe that the proposed development will support goal 3A.1 of the housing element of the city complaint, which aims to ensure that housing in the city is decent, safe, and sanitary to serve the needs of the city's present and future residents. And then also a policy 3B-26, which requires the city to continue to expand options toward meetings the needs of the very low, low and moderate-income population by developing on an ongoing basis model programs for providing safe and adequate housing, affordable housing in the city. I mean, the proposed housing is for workforce housing, they will have, you know, one, two, three-bedroom units that will serve, you know, the low and moderate income of the city. The design of the use creates a form and function which enhance the community character of the immediate vicinity of the parcel. Per Section 5805 of the city's LDR, all new construction is required to incorporate the LEED standards of the city's alternative or, as part of its new development in order to support the city's environmental initiatives. The proposed development is to be Florida Green Building Certified, which is a comparable program to the LEED certification with energy-saving fixtures as well as urban design elements, including but not limited to public art and landscape open space, which could be the catalyst for the renovation of Northeast 6th Avenue. And in terms of flexibility in regard to development standards, whether or not those are justified by the benefits of the community character, the applicant has expressed a desire for bonus units in order to create not just a viable project that maximizes the use of the site, but more importantly, provide a wide range of housing choices to the low and moderate-income families of the city, especially the elderly. In that regard, staff believes that the flexibility in standards is necessary for the successful development of the sites. And based on the foregoing, staff believe that this conditional use application is consistent with the requirements of Section 34-405 of the city's LDR, and is compatible with the future land use goal of this, and policy identifying the city's complaint. And the recommendation is made to approve the conditional use permit subject to a number of conditions that the applicant unified the law to a union of titles, that there are some final precise plan that I've submitted for DRC approval where we can review the layout, the look, the scale, the massing, and the design of the site, because right now, this is just for the conditional use permit, there'll be no site plan approval at this time. That there's a covenant that should be recorded against the property for the purpose of maintaining the affordable workforce housing for or term not less than 20 years. And this is some of the same conditions that was, that were attached to the previous approval when they were granted 138 units. So basically, they have scaled down, and then we, we think we can still impose the same conditions on the property. And that the applicant complied with all of the city-county regulations, and in Condition 6 of, in the conclusion section, show you how the applicant qualified for the density bonus that they were granted. Because they said they meet LEED goal or FBG's rating, they are qualified for an extra 25 units. There are some, a transport, a transit-oriented development standards requirements, which are required to get, you know, the conditional use permit for density bonus. They get three additional units and optional elements, the affordable workforce housing, they have more than 25% set aside for, or the low and moderate income, they get another additional 25 units since they, because of the location of the site on two corridors, on two streets, they can only qualify for 60, but based on the size of the site, they limit, they are limited to only 30. So this is why they only get like 58 units. So this is our recommendation to the board.
All right.
Is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here to speak to this?
Mr. Chair, as a point of order, as I had mentioned earlier when these proceedings began, this item, PC 2-15, is quasi-judicial in nature, and if I may, I would like to administer the oath at this moment for anyone desiring to speak on this item.
All right.
Anyone desiring to speak on this item?
Those of you that wish to speak, please stand.
Please stand and raise your right hand.
And only those of you who are sworn will be allowed to speak.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? We have more, more memberships now?
You've got to make up your minds, people.
Everyone, please, yeah, this is serious, it's quasi-judicial. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you provide is the truth, the whole truth, or nothing but the truth? Thank you, you may be seated.
All right, thank you. All right. Yeah, seven, okay, fine. Now, applicant, you may take the microphone and make a presentation.
We're going to both do this together if that's okay.
Well, introducing state names and work locations.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Michael Wall. I'm a resident of the city of Miami. I'm a partner of a firm called Pinnacle Housing Group, which is the applicant here. A brief history of Pinnacle, we've been in business for 18 years. We've built 26 developments in Miami-Dade County, predominantly affordable workforce housing. I would love for you to see our website. Our firm is really known for public art, and we will, we will grace this development with local art that is appropriate for North Miami. This is, this is a development plan that's very consistent with what we do, both in scale and in size and in, and hiring a higher, a high-end architect, Kobe Karp, to do this work. And clearly, we recognize that in this city, your workforce housing is, is older, it's, you know, it's frankly, functionally obsolete, and this, I think, will be a significant upgrade to, to the, to the housing stock that you have serving your workforce in the city. So thank you, and I'm here for any questions.
Good evening, Jennifer Chester, also Pinnacle Housing Group. I wanted to touch on something that Nixon said. This is a conditional, it's a request for a conditional use permit that has been issued in the past. This is actually a decrease in the size of what we're requesting from what was already previously approved. You have in front of you a proposed elevation as well as a site plan. Some of the key components that I'd like to point out for, for review is that we are going to be incorporating things that I know are important to the community, such as bike racks, pedestrian walkways, green space. There's going to be large community spaces for the residents, and this will be serving a wide range of residents. It's going to be serving a wide group of income levels, from those that are considered extremely low income up to those that are, you know, up to workforce housing. So it will be serving a large group of the community. That's what I wanted to point out.
All right, thank you.
And we're both here for questions.
All right. Let's, let's get the public hearing over with. We only have seven people that were sworn. All right, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. The seven who were sworn are the permitted speakers. Public hearing is open. We have two microphones. Please, each of you, select a microphone so we can move this along.
Good evening, Kevin Burns, 2065 Alamanda Drive. As the applicant pointed out, a similar project was previously approved about two years ago on this site. Unfortunately, that particular company ran into some internal problems, and this particular project never got built. It was much larger. This commission approved it favorably and moved it forward to the city council, and the city council approved it. When I and my city council and this planning commission created the bonus plans for developers who come in and do the right thing, we said, if you do this, we will give you more density. If you do this, we'll give you more density. You all agreed to it, you're a part of this plan. This developer, unlike developers who were here earlier, came in with a track record of doing quality projects, came in not asking something for nothing, he's saying, I just want some of the bonuses that your ordinances let me if I meet the criteria. He's meeting the criteria, or that company is meeting the criteria, and I think it is going to serve the needs of our community. Hopefully, the focus is going to be more on the seniors, because seniors, a lot of seniors want to sell their houses in our community, and they, but they want to stay in this community, and this is an ideal location for them. This is why those land development regulations, this is why those bonuses was created, this is everything you asked for. I have not always agreed with Michael Wall's projects, I'd have been on the other side of it, but on this project, this is what we've been asking for, just like the previous company that came forward was going to do, yet the fact that he's even asking for a little bit less, I would say grant him a little bit more and see what he could get on there within means, but if that's what they're asking for, they know more about building this type of properties than I do, and they can make it work, and it's a numbers game, folks. We sorely need it, and it would be the catalyst. And the fact that because it's senior citizens, they don't drive, don't, they don't create a lot of the traffic problems that we hear other developments having. So I look forward to this project, something finally being built on that piece of property where lots and lots of projects have come over the years. But if there's a company that's in good standing today, that has the money, the wherewithal, and the ability to get it done, it will be him, Mr. Wall's company. But the, the city has, again, you have approved a very similar, higher-density plan just a short time ago, and again, the city council did. Let's, let's see if we can move this forward with a strong recommendation to the city because we all know, and this planning commission has been striving for new development, smart development, development that makes sense in the right neighborhood at the right time, and this is where something like this should be built, it makes sense, and so I look forward to a favorable response for the applicant.
Thank you, Kevin. Yes, sir, state your name and address.
Roger Gordon. Address is in Biscayne Gardens, it's 14020 North Miami Avenue. I'm the, I'm the co-chairman of the MAC Committee for Biscayne Gardens. We're due north this area and, and west of it, and we're familiar with the area. The reservation I wanted to raise up to you is that when they're talking workforce, they're talking multi-bedroom units, and they're talking children, and when you increase density without increasing kid space, you're going to run into a problem. And if you need an example, take a look at 16th Avenue, that, with the area that was west of the North Miami General Hospital, I saw over and over again where variances were granted because they had no kids. But then when they closed the hospital, what happened? All the old people died or moved away, and now you've got people with families living out there, and they got no place for their kids because they made variances, increased densities, and basically broke the pattern of good planning. So I would caution when you're starting to bump these up, the bonuses are good, and everything you said was good, and they're good people, it's a good company. I happen to be a portfolio manager for a bank, and I had time to work before the downturn in the economy on some of the projects as a participant, and they had a good reputation, and they performed well. But I do caution on this point with kids, you've got a, two blocks, or one block to the east, you have a K8, you've got Linda Lenton, which is up in the, in our area, which is an elementary school, it's going to be an attractive place to live, but there's going to be kids. So you've got to have a site plan that deals with what you're really going to have, and it's not going to be a lot of old people.
All right, thank you. All right, next.
Gwen West at 13090 Griffin Boulevard. We talked about the local art, not knowing what that local art, is that graffiti, or what type of local art you're talking about? Are we doing like art-based kind of thing?
We're not in Winwood Wall.
Okay. You talked about affordable housing, but you said senior citizens. So there's two different type of people here, seniors, adults.
If you're going to respond, you need to do so on the record.
Do you want me to respond? Not, not till we get to the end, after the seven speakers.
You'll be given the opportunity to respond.
Okay, this, affordable housing, okay, are these Section 8 tenants? Or you don't know what type of tenants? You know, is this a mixed-use senior citizens and Section 8? Now, when you talked about bringing in more people, my concern again is, you know, the sewage problem, because the sewage, the sewage system is about 50-something years old. And before we bring in more people using a sewage syst, sewage system- And before we bring in more people using a sewage syst, sewage system, I kinda feel like we need to do something about that. That's it.
All right, thank you. Next.
Yes, my name is Howard Tonkin, I live at 12600 Griffin Boulevard. I would just like to ask the developer to please use as much native plant material and, and not just the typical thing that's used at the side of the highway, but try to focus on some habitat for some endangered species, because we're losing about five hundred and eighty-four species of birds in South Florida right now, and thirty-eight species of butterflies. So, if you could do the type of planting that would encourage some biodiversity and ecosystem, that would be great, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker. Any further speakers? Seeing no others, public hearing is closed. All right, does the developer wish to respond to any of the comments that were just made?
Sure, first of all, I appreciate the comments very much, and we look forward to working with the community in connection with this development. We, the, the tenants that we have, we're very inclusive. We're gonna, we're gonna have some elderly folks, we're gonna have some families. They're all, they're, we don't, we, although, obviously, under fair housing laws, we have to accept qualified Section 8 people, this is not a Section 8 development. It's funded with low-income housing tax credits that are administered by the state, and, and we, and let me also address another issue, and that's art. And I, I suggest, if you could, to take a look at our website.
Please, send the mic, send the mic.
What we do, what's that?
Use the mic, sir.
Use the mic.
I'm sorry. We are, you know, that's our signature. We're gonna use local artists, be they Haitian artists, or be they, you know, Caribbean artists, to grace the, the property. And we'd welcome everybody to take a look at our website and take a, look at, at things we do to give you some perspective. One of our developments sits on Thirty-Sixth Street and Ninety-Five. You've seen the, the ninety-foot burrito sculpture? That's us, okay? So, that's just an example of the, of the public art and investment. We've made an investment out of our pockets, my partners and I, of in excess of two million dollars in connection with art in public places in our development. So, something that's a major part of what we, what we do, so.
I, I made some notes, so I hope you don't mind. I just wanna make sure I addressed everything that was brought up. So, Michael addressed the public art, and he's absolutely correct, and I would suggest going to our website, it's www.pinnicalhousing.com. You can see every single development has public art. And I have to, to, you know, give a little bit of credit to the partners of Pinnacle Housing, I am not one, but I have been so impressed by what they have done at each of these properties, and bringing in local artists, and quite often, it's done through a competitive process, and the community gets to decide which piece of art they like best for that property. So, there is a concerted effort made there. The next thing I wanted to address is the, the demographic question. Yes, as Michael said, and because of the funding source that we're going after, to say that this is restricted to elderly, we can't do that. But it is certainly open to seniors, it is open to families, it is open to those that are income-eligible. This is not Section 8's public housing, this is low-income housing and workforce housing, which is different. Someone with a Section 8 voucher is certainly welcome to come and apply to live there, but it is not solely that type of housing. Let's see. I, I apologize, I cannot address the sewage issues, that's more of a city issue, so that I cannot speak to. I will say that, as Nixon pointed out, every property we've done, and I don't know for how long this has been, but it has either been LEED-certified or Florida Green Building certified. We have a significant track record of doing that. In fact, the property that Michael brought up, the one with the Brito girl, right next door is Vista Mar, and that is a LEED-certified high-rise. It was, to my knowledge, the first LEED-certified affordable high-rise in the country. So, we take great pride in that. In regards to landscaping, as I'm sure you know, Florida Green Building certification requires that there be a significant amount of native landscaping, and that's something that we've always prided ourselves on as well. It just makes good common sense. And I think that I have addressed everything, like I said, I made notes, so I apologize if I was a bit lengthy. Any questions from the commission?
Let's get into the commission discussion, and there may be, if there are, we'll let you know.
Okay.
All right. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Rees, we'll start at the far right.
I, I have quite a few, not quite a few questions, but questions for the developer. And I remember when this project came before us.
Use the microphone, Kenny.
I remember when this project came before us, we were gonna go one hundred and forty-five feet, and I, I thought that was spectacular. I, I don't know why we're not doing it. I thought this would really reshape and, and really change that whole configuration on Northeast Sixth Avenue. I don't know if you were here earlier, sir, I started in the city in nineteen seventy, and I retired in ninety-seven. And I, I seen Sixth Avenue go from a nice neighborhood to, to being controlled by slum lords. I see some regeneration happening now, where I see the buildings coming back decently, some of them. But I thought this project was really gonna put the seeds in there. We were gonna go with a beautiful high-rise building, one hundred and forty-five feet. The architect, I thought, was, boy, that was great, Kobe Karp, gosh darn, we're, we're going, we're really rocking and rolling. And now I see we're only gonna go seven stories, and, and I see a building, I hope this isn't the final concept of it, you mentioned art, and also the amenities, what kind of amenities are we gonna put in there? And there was a couple of questions, I, I'm familiar with your, 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 your project. Do you have, did you build a project on, I think, Northwest Seventeenth Avenue, one of the, like, a, with a parking garage underneath it also?
We actually do, we do, the parking that we have is usually separate structures. We don't do pedestal parking, because it's expen, it's expensive. I will tell you that the six stories, the, you may, is, from a development perspective, you get a, a cost reduction when you're at seventy-five feet or less. But frankly, I think the six stories is more consistent with, and compatible with the neighborhood than something that's fourteen stories there.
Well, we don't want, we want, the whole commission here, our whole idea was to change that stereo square box, low-end, uh, thing on, on Sixth Avenue. You know, I, I'm not against workforce, I'm, I'm pro-workforce housing, let me make that clear, okay? And after I left here, I went up to Illinois, and I remember the public housing projects, Cavini Green, so forth, and everything that got knocked down. I remember the New York City projects going up in the city of New York, up in the Bronx, in Manhattan, under Bob Moses. I'm, I'm quite familiar with it, and, and I'm quite sensitive to quality living. And I wanna see our people, I, I think it's terrific, I see where you'd have nothing smaller than eight hundred and fifty square feet. But I thought we were gonna have something more dynamic, more pizzazz, something to really give the people, "Hey, I'm proud to live here, this is where I'm gonna go." And, and a hundred and forty-five feet, I thought, boy, that was really gonna be dynamic. And now, we're down to seven stories, and to me, that's just more of the same nonsense on Sixth Avenue. There's no class to it, there's no pizzazz.
By the way, I think, let me just try to address that, Commissioner. First, I think we're restricted to, to a hundred and tenth feet, which is, which really equates to eleven stories. Secondly, I will tell you that we're gonna deliver to you something with pizzazz. And let me also tell you something that happens in neighborhoods where we build new housing. And I, you know, I, we've done business in, in most municipalities in Dade County. Quite frankly, I think the city of North Miami is in, is in the most dire need of new housing
Yes, I agree.
to, to compete with the existing housing stock. And in order for them to compete with us, they have to upgrade. And I see, and I see it every place that we put, we build new housing, sir. So, so there's a, there's a, gonna be a rebound effect and a, and a community effect, because you have to compete with us, and we're, otherwise, we're gonna steal your tenants. And, and, and there's, there's gonna be, I think, in, in the city, hopefully, a movement to upgrade the, the older housing stock that exists. But I will tell you, in terms of pizzazz, and we haven't been through DCR here, and this is just a very preliminary site plan, really for the purposes of, of showing, showing something, okay? We haven't delved, we haven't really dug into this yet. But one of the things that we strive for at, at Pinnacle, and I, again, welcome, welcome you to take a look at our website, is each of our developments, we try to be better than the last. And this is the next, hopefully. And I will tell you, you're gonna see pizzazz.
Let me, let me ask you, you're talking about amenities, what kind of amenities are we putting in there?
The amenities that we have, I will tell you, are consistent with high-end market-rate housing. So, we have community rooms, kitchens, we have gyms, we have computer labs, we have, you know, Wi-Fi common areas, we have pools, we have, I don't know if we're gonna have one here, we're gonna have gardens, we're gonna have
Are we gonna have, are we gonna have a pool here?
I don't know, I don't know whether we planted it or not.
That's one of my questions, that we're, we're talking about, why not?
I don't know, it's something we could talk about.
Okay, well, you know, let, let's talk about it right now. We, we, we're just a little tired, I don't, I don't mean to be condescending to you. But, you know, I, I, this whole commission
Yeah.
wants to see the city change, we don't wanna see just little buildings going up, more of the same. Now, you have a great reputation, and I was happy that you, you're taking this project over.
Thank you, appreciate that.
You know, you said you didn't want a, what do you call it, pedestal parking? Well, why don't we look at pedestal parking for a second, and hear me out? You're shaking your head, hear me, hear me, hear me out just a second. Let's look at pedestal parking with a beautiful underground, with a beautiful parking garage underneath it, and give it more green space out in the back, and, and you put your playgrounds back out there, and you really do something dynamic that we can really show it off. And, and, and you use the native fauna and, and the shrubbery and everything else. Put something besides ground-level parking, and maybe put a nice pool back there, and, and you're, uh, give the people that live there something to be proud of. When I'm looking out of my, my balcony on the seventh floor, I'm not looking at my park, I'm not looking at a bunch of cars parking down there, but I'm looking at some green space, something that's absolutely beautiful, that I'm gonna say, "Hey, come on over to my house and take a look at what I have," okay? Something, something nice, you know, not a, 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 a parking garage, I'm sorry.
You know, with, with, you know, first of all, we're, we're constrained in terms of the, the resources that we have to build this development, okay? When you're getting into pedestal parking, you're getting into park, parking costs on a, on a stall basis that's probably twice what it is, you know? Okay, so, but I will tell you, and I, and I will commit to this commission, that you're gonna be happy, and it, and this, and this development is gonna have a tremendous amount of pizzazz and impact. Because, let me, let me just tell you, historically, that's what we do, okay? What we do is, is we go into neighborhoods that are really in need of, of quality affordable housing, and we build something that's dramatically better than what exists, what exists, and the impact has been dramatic. I will tell you, you know, we've, we've done that in Little Havana, we've done that in, in Wynwood and Edgewater. We're doing that right now in, in the West Grove. We're building the first new development in the West Grove in fifty years.
How, how high are you going there?
Five stories.
Okay, and what's your tallest building?
It is, it is dramatic, huh?
What's the tallest one you put up?
Tallest, tallest building?
The one off of 595 with the maze?
It's fourteen, fourteen stories.
We have one under construction now that's
Yeah, we have one under stan, construction now, that's a, that, that is both affordable and, and market rate.
Is it not marketable to, to do a, a higher building here?
It's not, it's not affordable. We can't, we can't do it based upon the resources that we have, it's as simple as that.
Well, and also, sorry, can I just
Sure, please.
There's also the technical issue of, right now, we do not have the square footage available to us that was available the last time the compuse amendment was approved. Under the ninety thousand square feet, anything over eighty thousand square feet, you get that increased height availability.
Right, and, and we had a hundred and forty-five feet before, right?
Yeah, but we're, we're talking, right now, to us as a developer, it's less square footage that's available, which puts us under the eighty thousand, which puts us at a cap of a hundred and ten feet. So, we're not opposed to going higher, but the current guidelines, and somebody correct me if I'm wrong, don't allow that.
You know, I have to defer to council, but how did we do it the last time, to get the, the last developed?
There was an increase in square footage that we don't have.
I, I, I mean, I just
The last proj, the proj, this, this project was adopted or approved by this commission January seventeenth, twenty thirteen, and the project size consisted of two-point-twelve acres.
Okay.
It's now one-point-six-five, and so, the footprint is much, it's less than what they had before to work on.
We couldn't, we couldn't go, do the whole same thing again? Why couldn't we?
Why couldn't, yeah.
Why, why couldn't, why, why couldn't we, why couldn't they come in and say, "Hey, we wanna go high"? I mean, you know, why, why couldn't we do that? Go ahead. And, and we, we, we're just gonna give a, a, a variance, a change to the land use for the last, for the people that were building Walmart, why can't we do it for these people? I, 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 I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, you know, I, I, I'm, I've been here a long time. I started working here in nineteen seventy, and, and I still live here. And I, I, we just wanna see this town change, we don't wanna, and, and you know what? You have a golden opportunity to do something really fantastic. You've got a, a planning commission that's gonna be with you, you've got a, you've got a city council that's new, that wants to do the great things, you know, and, and I see six, seven stories, I, I feel like, ah, what the hell, it's more of the same. And I think you missed it earlier, and I told the, the thing about Florida power and light, they went through Miami Shores and Biscayne Park originally was supposed to go down there, but we're the ones that got stuck with those god-awful power poles. And I, I don't wanna see that anymore, and I'm very passionate about this, and it just
We're not opposed, we're just trying to fit within the current guidelines.
Well, maybe we should go back to the drawing boards.
Yeah, they seem content, right?
I'm sorry, man, I can't hear you.
Kenny, I, I understand the concern, but I, we, we're gonna beat a dead horse on this.
Okay, well, let, let me just go one thing to staff, if you're gonna, this is just a concept.
Yes.
Then you have to come back to the planning commission?
Of course.
No, not according to this, well, then, I think, according to, I think, number two here, it says, "The applicant submits the final precise plans and applicable landscape plan to the City Community Plan and Development Department Development Review Committee." Well, you know what? Those are the people that work at City Hall, and they're very professional, but I think the final approval of this thing should come before us, who are the citizens here, and say yea or nay if we like this plan. And, and I think that should be a stipulation in there. I, I, I just don't think that, we have, we're here, we're tenured, we got thirty, forty years, some of us living in this city. The city staff, God bless them, they don't have the roots here, and I think it should be up to us, the planning commission, to say yes and no on this.
It's a point of order, Commissioner. Well, it's actually under code, the site plan approval process is already scripted out under three-dash-two-oh-six, and what you ask would literally require an amendment to that, to that code, to the old land development regulation. Unfortunately, it is within the R, DRC province, it goes to them. You, however, can make a recommendation that if, if it's feasible, both financially and engineering-wise, that they can go higher if they can, up to the maximum. And that's a, that's a reasonable consideration, you're giving the, the applicant the freedom to perhaps go higher, if they're capable of doing it. I'm not an engineer, but I think that the foot, the, the footprint that they have to work with limits their height.
And the density as well.
And the density as well, so.
Well, the, the, the frustration here, Kenny, is our land development regulations giveth, and they also taketh away. So, on this one, the final approval, yes, goes to the, the staff at that point, it's not up to us. Personally, speaking out of turn, yes, I'd like something twice as high, half as long, and a nice parking garage. There are probably good reasons they can't do it, but I sure wish they'd itemize those reasons, because something taller would be architecturally significant in that area.
Mr. Chairman, it was just a very short time ago that we, we dealt with the same issues with the developer, I believe, on Sixth Avenue and a Hundred and Twenty-first Street. If you'll recall, we, we had the same issue that he was restricted by, by not only what the market could, could bear, but our zoning. All we could do
Yes, an unwillingness to be imaginative.
Right, right, I mean Right, right, I mean, you know, we can certainly encourage him to be a little bit more imaginative or more creative. But, you know, again, Ken, we're stuck with, with the rules that we have in front of us, that we have to determine.
Well, then I suggest that we, we change the ordinance.
You know, you brought up-
And, and we may well in the coming year.
I think we should change the ordinance. We're not an army of occupation, the city staff is the city staff, but we're the ones that have the roots here, and I think we should have the final say on this. Not knocking their professionalism, their hard work, their dedication, you know, I'm not looking at the technical stuff, I'm looking at the, the final approach, something very simplistic there, how's the building gonna look? What's the landscaping gonna be at? Is, is it gonna, is it gonna work for us? I'm not talking about the, the metrics of the building, and the plumbing, and the air conditioning, and the, you know, any of that stuff. I, I wouldn't know where to begin. But I do know, when I look at a nice project, I say, "That's a nice project." When I look at your building downtown, I come off of I-95, I say, "That's a nice project, I wish that was in North Miami." Then when I see this, I say, "What happened?"
Okay, it's, it's number one that's-
That's a concept.
Mike, let me answer this.
Commissioner, I, I think, I think we're on, I think we're on the same page, okay? We wanna make, within, within the constraints of, of your zoning codes and your ordinances that are affecting this, this development. And within the constraints of the re, the resources that we have to develop this, this project, we're gonna, we're gonna deliver you, to you, something incredibly impactful. And I don't necessarily agree that fourteen stories is dramatically bigger and better than, than eight stories or seven stories. This will be impactful, and this will be something you'll look at with pride, and something that will dramatically affect the, the housing, the housing that exists, and, and how they have to compete with us. And I, and I also welcome, you know-
Try to understand where we're coming from. If you drive up and down Sixth Avenue, all you see are elongated apartment buildings. What you're, even in your concept, we're looking at something that is so, it's a, it's the same old thing that we are now looking at along Sixth Avenue. It is, don't, you know, you know-
We realize that this is not really what you're probably gonna build, but-
Your, your concept-
Your picture didn't help you any here tonight.
Your picture is your worst enemy right now.
Yes, it is.
Whoever came up with this is your worst enemy.
It rather looks like student housing from a local university.
And then when I look at the parking lot-
Nothing wrong with that, but there's nothing challenging in that for the future of the city.
You talk of green space, and then we're looking at a diagram which, quite frankly, doesn't really show a lot of foliage.
It's all parking.
It's all parking.
Frankly-
So you have to understand where we're coming from, this is what we have to work with.
It would've been better if we didn't see this, you see, it would've been much further ahead tonight.
Isn't that, this is not something we're married to, number one, it's gonna change dramatically as we-
We'll contribute a quarter for the divorce fee.
As we work with, with your staff, and I will, and I promise you, once again, because it's in our mutual best interest, to deliver something that's in, it's gonna be very impactful, and something that everybody will look at with pride.
Let me let Jane get in there.
Okay.
First of all, I commend you for, you know, the good projects that you have been providing in different cities. I agree with Kenny. All of us are here, wanting to see the city in a different direction. Most developers that come here, they wanna build low income, low housing, and I'm for that, I have no problem with that. I just don't want the city to be full of low housing. And we need to beautify the city more. I think you have a goal in mind, especially you have the track record of developing good projects. I mean, this is, this would be a good, good place for you to perhaps, you know, put your, your stamp on a, a much better project, a more beautifying city in the city of North Miami. I think, I'd like to ask you, if for some reason you can, something of magic can happen where you, we changed the ordinance, or if it's possible, would you be willing to perhaps go a little bit higher? Or would you have issue with the demographic? I don't know.
Going back to something we were talking about earlier, we are restricted by one other factor, aside from our current restrictions in terms of zoning and density and that sort of thing. We're also restricted by the amount of money that we can get from the federal government to build these types of developments. That is not to say that we couldn't potentially do, you know, something with two towers there, but at any given time, the amount of funding that we can get for a development, our kind of line in the sand is a hundred and ten units. That may change if Congress decides to do tax reform and increase the amount of tax credits that they wanna give out. But right now, that's kind of our line in the sand. Now, we have done developments in the past that have been multi-phase developments, and we've done cool things where we've, we've melded both phases together. And that is certainly something that we'd consider. But at, at any given time, we're going to be capped out at a hundred and ten units, we just don't have the additional funding to go beyond that, unless, of course, the city of North Miami has money somewhere that they would like to contribute.
I think bonus units is a shame.
That would be, that would be a good idea. And my, my other major concern, if council, if you can help me out with that, obviously, one of the, our resident here have been having sewer issue. Now, how would this project affect the sewer issue? How would the sewer issue affect the project or the residents?
Well, the sewer system is different, Jane, that's, that's, the city is constantly upgrading sewers.
Okay.
And any building that goes in has to be connected, and the developer always has to pay the connection fees.
The, the level of service for new development has to be maintained. So, so whatever the impact is, will have to be mitigated by new infrastructure, if there's not one already existing.
If I'm mistaken, they're doing a project right now on a hundred and thirty-first Street, and I see it going westbound. I believe they're changing the pipe, I don't, is that sewer, Kevin, do you remember? I, I think it's sewer lines, ma'am, I, I-
I, I think it's the sewer line that's going down a hundred and thirty-first Street westbound, so that may, may be a relief for you.
Yeah, at, at any rate, the, the constant improvements are being made, we're not unaware of the problems, just never seem to have enough money to do it all in one shot. And let me, let me, if you gentlemen to the right are finished, let me try to move to the left. I, I know Mr. Prevettell is just chomping at the bit here.
No, no, not as much, I actually, but, but, Mr. Chairman, you, you mentioned something very interesting, and I know it was a joke, we said it would be better off if we didn't see this, see the, the plans tonight. And I don't know if you recall my reaction to the first round of this, when basically, all we got in, in total was this plan.
That, yep.
That was it. And on that, we voted to have double the density, and to vacate two alleys, and to change the zoning. And by the way, before you go, here, have some bonus units. And we did that on this, which is basically an aerial photograph with some red lines on it. And we did all that, that was it, and we're, we're that committed to this project. Tell you the truth, I'm really relieved, and I'm, I'm sorry, Commissioner Each, I know you're, you're looking for something that has pizzazz, aren't we all? We really, I think we're on the same page with that, but I don't think getting, you know, just double of this, I mean, it's not part of the, it's not part of the, how should I say it, the game plan, all right? They, they have a certain, they have a certain, thanks, they have a certain parameters that they have to use, and it's with funding, and it's a, a certain return on the investment. And so in this case, I'm actually kind of, kind of relieved. I'm, I'm very happy, I'm very happy that the site does not, does not, I'm not excited with the project, by no means, okay? But I'm happy that it doesn't extend completely to the west, and then, you know, be this intimidating tower on top of single-family residential. And, you know, I'm not crazy about all the surface parking, but I'd rather have that than the tower on top of the single-family residential. I don't, I wish there was a, a more usable green space. Spent a couple hours, and, but, you know, have an alternative, but doesn't necessarily provide a lot of green space. I know you guys are challenged with that, even to get another space or two, it's difficult. I mean, maybe this area, it'd be nice if it could possibly have additional green for some sort of feature, at least to look out on, some sort of promise of, even though people may not even use it, some sort of promise to, of outdoor entertainment of some sort. And you do have some pedestal-type parking, right, as you enter into the structure from the south, that's really raised above.
The second floor and above is kind of, it's not currently, but there are columns there, but it is-
Which, which the columns aren't shown, but I trust they'll have to be worked in.
Say that again, you want the parking, okay.
The, the second, the second floor and above kind of juts out over the first floor, and then there are columns, so there will be some parking underneath.
Under the building?
Yes. Because we also had the issue of, how do we get the required number of parking spaces in this space as well, and, yeah. We're trying to fit it all.
You know, I do have one reservation about the project, which is not addressed here. And, and we didn't hit on it hard enough when Car Four was making their presentation. We obligated them to have a covered bus parking facility on northeast Sixth Avenue. We did not obligate a covered bus bench on a hundred and thirty-fifth. Now, if we look at transit-oriented design, and I, you know, a covered bus bench is a small thing, the city actually is paying to put up five of them a year. Probably, you could get one on a hundred and thirty-fifth, and I, I would ask that you really, really, seriously look at that. Because if, in fact, we get commuter railway service on the eastern edge of the city, I believe those are the FEC tracks, if that comes through in the coming decade, as it may well, there's going to be a much greater interest in seeing east-west bus traffic. Your facility was designed with the intention that people would be going north to south. But in point of fact, if we follow the transit-oriented design blueprints that the Metro Day planning people are putting together, then we're dealing with heavy rail on the east side of the city, which is going to increase the east-west bus, bus flow. And, and I, I would like to see you at least, staff, hold out for a covered bus bench on a hundred and thirty-fifth. There isn't one in this, in this plan. It's on northeast Sixth, that's where the bus lane was, was gonna be built. There had to be a concession for a covered bus bench on Sixth, nothing on a hundred and thirty-fifth. You see, and people are gonna go east to west, as much as they're gonna go north to south. And, and you really need to do something, whether it comes up under staff review, or the developer graciously admits, "Oh yeah, we need to have a covered bus bench there, it just makes good sense," one way or the other, that has to be incorporated into this thing now. That's not part of the proposal tonight, they're just asking for the bonus units of reaffirmation, but the bus bench has gotta be there.
One of the required, you know, elements for them to get the bonus is to provide four of the element of the TOD standards. And one of them, as listed in page three, would be a bus shelter on the west side of the side frontage on northeast Sixth Avenue. And they have to work with Miami Transit to provide.
Right, on northeast Sixth.
Yeah. So, so you want one, a hundred and thirty-fifth also?
Yeah, because, think about it, your heavy rail is going to be east of you.
I might point out, there is a bus stop right now on the corner of a hundred and thirty-fifth and Sixth Avenue.
Yeah, and no covered bus bench.
No, I think it is covered.
So that, that would be included.
No, it isn't.
But I know there's a bus stop there.
You know, so you need to, there's got, you've gotta go with the second bus bench there, one on a hundred and thirty-fifth, to cover the east-west flow. Yes, I know that, but, but we need to raise the issue, and staff, you need to, because you made, we made a really big issue for transit-oriented design on northeast Sixth, and I recall the conversations, I was here, I've been here for a lot of years now, and nothing was addressed for a hundred and thirty-fifth for the east-west. And since that time, there's been a lot more effort, time, and attention put on the development of rail along the FEC tracks.
That could be included as part of the bonus, which I'm-
You need to, you need to find a way to do that, I don't know how we would do that, you need us to make a recommendation on that?
Yes, yes.
All right, and let's, then the staff, commissioners, we wanna make a recommendation for a covered bus bench on the hundred and thirty-fifth Street side of this project.
Now, would you have it going eastbound or westbound?
Yeah, that'd be going, well, it would be-
The building's on the west side.
Yeah, it'd be westbound at that point, but still, you're gonna get your traffic coming-
I mean, there's already an existing bus, there's already an existing bus route going west.
We know there's a bus route, there needs to be a covered bus bench.
It just needs to be a bus.
Okay, yeah.
Can I go?
Yeah, Mr. Prevettell, go ahead, now, we've all-
And go back, just for, for clarity's sake, I know Commissioner Each was requesting what the amenities are. I believe all the amenities are located on the site plan, are they not?
Yes.
Yeah, now, these may change, you know, but yes, the vast majority are listed there.
Yeah, so-
A multiple-purpose room, amenities, service area, so that's easy.
Computer lab, laundry facility, fitness center, multi-purpose room.
And now, they're not-
Make point, they're not necessarily large spaces, the fitness center is a little bit more than a car space in size, as is the computer.
We have approximately twenty-two hundred square meters of community spaces that we use for a variety of things, so I think that may just be a little bit-
I, I know they could reallocate, but it's gonna take away space from, from either the multipurpose or for the theater room. But those are the amenities on the first floor. A couple, well, well, we're making requests, and I know that the, the commission would like to have, to up the aesthetic ante on this. Is there some chance, and Kobe Carp is a very capable firm, I know it may cost a few extra dollars, but can we turn the corner, particularly the corner at Sixth Avenue and a hundred and thirty-fifth, the primary corner? Can we architecturally turn the corner there?
Let me, let me make a couple suggestions, first, as to the bus bench on a hundred and thirty-fifth Street, you know, conceptually, without talking about a, you know, designing it, we have no problem with that, and, and obviously, funding it. I think it's a good idea, frankly, one of the great things about this program is we have a, we have, we're tied to this property for fifty years. You know, we own it in perpetuity, and, and there are, and there are, and as a result, we have to design something that is both great and sustainable. But I, I had a question concerning council, and that is, obviously, your planning commission here, which are, you know, bright and, and caring people, and knowledgeable people, wanna input on our development, okay? Is there, is there any way to facilitate a dialogue between you and us as to what your preferences are? And what I would prefer that you do is actually look at our website, look at the examples of what we have in, in urban development and design in, in Miami-Dade County, and say, "Hey, I like this." Or, "I, I suggest this," or, "I think this is great," or, "I think it's important." We would like that input, and, and as a matter of fact, we usually, before presenting projects to commissions, we, and, and we get into Jennings-type issues, frankly, we meet with every commissioner and talk to them about what their likes and dislikes are. And we, and we welcome the dialogue between you and us as to what you want and what you prefer, and, and how you want this to be impactful in the city, because we're on the same page.
I will, sorry, can I just address, we actually do have a development that's similar in layout to what you're talking about, and I'm just sitting, I'm just standing here looking at it, but I like that idea, and yes, I think that we can make that work if we-
I'll give you my, my short wish list, which I, I hope would maybe satisfy-
What I'd like to do, if possible, is, is maybe give you some contact information and formally have you look at and-
Is that, is that okay, that's okay, I guess.
I don't know, I don't know the protocol.
Well, I gotta, I gotta, I have a suggestion, if I may. You, you mentioned that you built separate parking structures also. Is it possible to build a, a two-story back there to keep, to get more green space?
That's, right now, that's solely depending on the federal government.
Okay, so you would, you would definitely look at that?
If, if, if some certain, certain things happen, and we're hoping that Congress is going to pass, that will allow us to get just a little bit more funding, then absolutely.
Okay, and, and the other thing-
And, and maybe, and maybe County Commissioner Monison can, can get us some county money.
You got it, I'll speak to him, I'll be down to it.
I'm sorry.
One of the things I could suggest to staff and to our attorney, I'm not knocking the Coppingtons, the, the people in the planning department, not at all, they work damn, damn hard, I'm, I'm proud to know. We kind of feel that we're left out at the final decision. Okay, so now we have the Community Planning Development Department Review Committee, possibly, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is it possible for any of us members from the planning commission to be on that review committee and to give our input at that time?
If there's more than two commissioners present, it would have to be done in the public.
Okay, so one of us would be, say... Could you, could you explore that and let me know?
I can tell you that the public meeting laws would require that that particular meeting, uh, be held in the, in the public. It would have to be advertised.
Well, that's if there's two or more, there's only one.
No, 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 one member, sure, yeah, absolutely.
And that might be, that might, we might wanna rotate something like that amongst, but that's amenable to the city.
In respect to this, in respect to this project, though, can I, can I just throw out a couple things that it, that doesn't hold you to it, but just the possible wish list to possibly make the commissioner a bit more happier and to maybe make the community a little happier? Uh, just rattling these off. One, one is the, looking at turning the corner, and by that, we mean articulating the primary corner at the main intersection. Uh, I'm not saying whether it should be rounded or faceted or glazed or not glazed, but some way of acknowledging the corner to, to, uh, uh, to, to not look like it's just sort of stuck, they was taking off another site and put there, but it does recognize the corner and something happens there. Could be setback, could be a number of things.
On the thirty-sixth street side or on the thirty...
Turning, turning the cor, by, I mean the corner at a hundred and thirty-fifth and Sixth. It's where your lobby is, and how convenient, yeah, it's where your lobby entrance is, and it's, it may work hand in hand on that in some capacity. Uh, if it's eased back slightly, you'll have a little bit more green space, you'll increase the visibility turning the corner. You invite people from the intersection, uh, could be a win-win. That's the first thing. Second thing is...
Sort of like a Sears, a Sears Tower?
Uh, possibly, something, well, approach. And, and the, the, uh, Koby Carp's, the designers certainly know about, uh, you know, turning the corner there. Uh, the other thing is, uh, there were some comments regarding the facade. There's a possibility, if you can look into it, again, cost maybe a little bit more, if there's more sculpting of the facade, whether it be with the facade itself or with the balconies, uh, something to play with that to break it up. I think you're, you do not wish to have like the straight plane, uh, going across, that if it breaks up somehow, it'll be, again, a win-win, may also bring value.
This is not our final plan.
I, I, I know. That's why I'm putting my wish list there, 'cause we're not gonna get another shot at... Um, the, the third is, if you have a chance at the north side, if you wanna do some acknowledgement of the north facade on a hundred and thirty-sixth street as people are coming down, uh, Sixth Avenue, would be number three on the wish list. Uh, can't do too much on the amenities down below, but here, I, I have a feeling you're, you're not gonna come up with a pool. There really isn't a lot of land in the back, I don't think you're gonna be putting it up on the roof. I think all of that's very unlikely, I don't think you're gonna be putting it down below, uh, in the common space. However, an acknowledgement of, of Commissioner Each, who's very dedicated, by the way. Um, he's, uh, uh, he, he wanted the pool, he requested the pool.
Yes.
But, I don't know if you know, I've never, I've never been in one, but I've seen he has fantastic hot tubs. He's like a James Brown kinda guy, hot tub. Uh, he's a hot tub kinda guy. Is there a chance, in, in, on behalf of Commissioner Each, that this little green space could be a, uh, possibly a hot tub that's then gated off? Can you actually look into that?
We could, let me tell you, we could have certain restrictions, but we, we could look into it.
If you could look into it, that would, that would be appreciated.
We'll be looking into it in the five years.
And if you, if you need an advisor, he, he has some fantastic hot tubs, so, how many, three, four?
Um, three.
Three of them, and they're all, they're all remarkable, so...
Alright, uh, gentlemen, let's not beat this to death now. We've had some good input, it's been great fun. I, I will say to you, Mike, and, and young lady, probably if you'd given us a photo portfolio of your other projects instead of a, a mundane dormitory, we probably would've saved a great deal of discussion here tonight, and we would've felt that you're really rising to the challenge. And we accept that this is just a series of blocks because you've got, you felt compelled to put...
It's laying out a site plan.
Yeah, you felt compelled to do that. It, it does not speak well of the project, however...
To make a motion to approve?
The issue before us is the, is the bonus units, do we have a motion?
I have a motion, I...
All in favor of Mr. Prevettell's second side?
Point of order, uh, Mr. Chair, is this with the covered, uh, bus shelter amendment?
Uh, the, yes, let's, uh, put that in there that we recommend...
Approval with the additional, uh, bus shelter.
Yeah, approval with a covered bus shelter along a hundred and thirty-fifth.
A hundred and thirty-fifth street. And as, as an aspirational request, the best...
Well, I, I think we had a lot of aspirational comments tonight, but let's stick to the bus shelter for the motion.
Seriously, I'm glad you guys are taking on this project. I, I, I really am. You, you've got a good reputation, and I, I seen you work for it.
I promise you, you'll be happy.
And, and please, please do your best to put that pool in there, I'm for the pool as well.
Alright, we've got a, got a motion here for Mr. Prevettell, he's the second, seconded by Mr. Castor, all in favor? Alright, alright, that's it, motion's carried, thanks loads, guys.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I, and again, I invite you, your input.
Yes.
I'd like to thank the audience, for those who, who...
Yes, for those of you that stayed, you know, we should have a second group photo for those of you who have survived. And we thank you. There you go. Well, you know, it's, it's wonderful to have you come down to a planning commission meeting, it's rare anybody bothers. Uh, just about, before we adjourn, our next meeting is... Staff, hello? Our next meeting is Tuesday, February...
What's Tuesday?
Yes. Well, I could, but it would take a job away from staff, and he makes such great sandwiches. February third. See if, yeah, I, I don't want you to be limited just to sandwiches. Tuesday, February third. Alright, we're adjourned. No, there are no trashcans here on the dais, do you believe it?